Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight, and I will call to order the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors Business Meeting for Tuesday, July 15th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on to the approval of the minutes, I would just like to note that we did hold a closed gathering prior to this meeting solely for the purpose of collecting information and some personnel issues regarding the manager and finance director hiring process. Again, this meeting was held for informational purposes and did not involve any deliberations. For the approval of the minutes for April 1st, 2025, our business meeting as well as the April 8th, 2025 vacancy board special meeting, do we have any questions or changes on those meeting minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
No.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion or public comment on the meeting minutes?
John Packer, 5723 Kenwood Ave. It's not so much on just these, but these are, you know, three months old plus. And I know it's been brought up before, and I've seen it in discussion in other minutes. Is there a way that you guys can begin a new procedure where we're dealing with the meeting minutes from last meeting, or say, the last two meetings, and then go back and fill in the gap of what we're missing? Because that's really what should be done, because I don't think anybody's wanting either looking at them, or after three months have gone by, what relevance does it have?
Thank you, Mr. Packer. I know our recording secretary is very diligent in her work, and we will look into that. I think that this is pretty common for timing and meeting minutes for other municipalities. But thank you for your comments. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to public comment, is there any public comment on non-agenda items this evening? Again, just for everybody's benefit, please state your name and your address. I will raise my hand at five minutes just to let you know that it's been five minutes.
Oh, it won't be five minutes. I'm Alvin Q. Taylor. My wife is here, Mary. We're located at 1062 Ackery Drive, Harrisburg 17111. I'm just coming as a follow-up to the last two meetings I attended to bring up the concern there about Ackery Drive, the erosion and runoff there by the pond behind my house. I came here early in the year, in March, and then I was at the water board meeting as well. With the last couple storms we have had, we have had a massive erosion problem down there. And the last storm was, had wind issues with it. And with the erosion and the wind and those real tall trees, they were really rocking back there, and I was afraid they were going to crash into the new addition we put up. But my concern for this being here tonight was, is there a timeline that you can give me with regards to the erosion problem? It is worse, getting magnified by the storms and the intensity. It is increasing going down that bank. There is a sewer manhole to the left of it, and I see the land from the manhole to the erosion part. I'm getting ready to see a big wedge of land go down and expose the side of that manhole, wherever it's going to going down. And my concern is, is there a timeline? I know everybody's aware of it, they've been out and examined it, but it's just getting worse by the storm. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do we have an update on the timeline, Mr. Kishiba?
So I'll get with Public Works and Sewer after this meeting and update that and get back to you.
Thank you. I do remember hearing about your issue before, and will respond. Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Taylor, has any work been done out there at all?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hi, Julie Lober, 18 Care Street. I would like to express my public support for the establishment of a redevelopment commission in this township. I commend the township for its patience with the private sector in dealing with some of the problematic, derelict properties, properties in decline. We've been very patient with the private sector, and it seems that now it's time has come for the township to step up and facilitate something to happen with these properties. And I am very grateful to that. I would certainly hope that when the members of this commission or committee, or whatever it turns out to be, are selected, that the process is transparent, it's bipartisan, and the public can see who is on it and what their motives are. So I thank you.
Thank you very much. I agree. Any other public comment? Mr. Minsker, please.
Good evening, members of the board, staff, and ladies and gentlemen. I am Bill Minsker, 5956 Lingelstown Road in Lingelstown. I am here tonight, the fourth time, to introduce to you the fourth of 10 projects, which I would like to suggest to you for your consideration. I remind you that these projects all are designed to give a more positive impression of what our board is doing, and also to give some beneficial activity for the general public within our township. Before you, at your seat, is the packet number four for your blue notebooks, if you still have those, to put this material within. The project this time that I am presenting to you is a highway project to remove humps that cause, or can cause, serious traffic movement issues. There are eight highways which I am presenting to you that have some issues with humps. On those eight highways, there are 17 humps that are shown pictorially on pages two through eight as you go through the packet. Five of those humps I have marked with a red exclamation point. I feel these are the five more serious, in some cases have caused fatalities, and I will point these out to you as we go. So as you look at the materials now in your packet, pages two through eight, on the cover letter on the top, these eight highways are mentioned along with how many humps are presented on each one. Starting on page two, on Parkway West, this is a hump that resulted in two fatalities. There was a motorcycle containing two people that were proceeding south at this curve, which is about quarter of a mile south, quarter of a mile north of Staufers on Parkway West. They were proceeding south on that highway. As they rounded this turn, they lost control of the motorcycle, and it flipped and killed both residents of our township. This hump and the other ones that I'm presenting to you, the simple thing is just to simply cut back the hump, just level it off. After a study would be done by PA One Call to make sure there are no utilities that would be affected, it would be a rather simple procedure, I think, to simply bulldoze off the hump and level it, and then repave it. This could be done, I would think, in about one day. So the Parkway West. Then, on Blue Mountain Parkway, this is the hump, the first of the humps, just as you're proceeding north, approaching Jacobs Avenue, that crosses at that point, you can see the cross street. And that hump also would be simple to level and have no effect really on any driveways. And by the way, with all of these presentations, I've taken in consideration any driveways or cross streets that would be affected, and the effects would be minimal. Going to page three, on Colonial Road, there are three. The first of these, as anyone who travels Colonial Road knows, there are many of these humps. The first of these is the first hump going south at Crestview Road, where the traffic crosses and is really blocked in their view of traffic coming north and south. Then is Hillsdale, where the Presbyterian Church is located on Colonial Road. There is a hump there that blocks the vision of traffic coming out of Hillsdale. And the one that is most serious with the exclamation point is the one you're probably most familiar with, where the township has done some altering already to control traffic, and that's at the intersection of Valley View and Macintosh. That hump, which you see there in the picture, could easily be leveled, that would give much more visibility to traffic that's moving north and south. Moving on to page number four, on North Mountain Road, there are three, all three of which I think are serious because of the amount of traffic that travels on North Mountain Road. The first of these is at the entrance to the Central Dolphin Middle School. The second is at Catherine Street, where my fire company and Lower Paxton Ambulance, or South Central Ambulance, have responded many times to accidents caused by traffic pulling out of Catherine Street and not seeing the traffic coming over the hump as you see the car in the picture. Yes, ma'am. Okay. And then, Blue Mountain Parkway and Blue Ridge Avenue is the third one. On page number five, there are two humps there on North Blue Ribbon Avenue. You can see both. Both of these would easily be able to be leveled and paved. And right below the township building here on Prince Street, where Lancer Street comes out there on the left, is a blind intersection for traffic coming, across that highway coming north. On South Blue Ribbon Avenue, there is one very large hump which could be leveled. And then lastly, on Wenrick Street, there are five of these humps. I think you're familiar with these. I know there has been discussion eventually on redoing the traffic patterns on Wenrick Street, and that certainly would involve the removal of those humps. Anyone who's lived in this area for a long time and has been a driver probably has had the thrill of going over those humps on Wenrick Street and would be aware of these. So I call your attention to these. Again, I remind you of this visual kind of presentation that I'm making for you, that it's a 3D, not 2D type presentation involving a dynamic activity for you to consider that is daring and doable. Next month, in August, I will be back to present two more issues that are related to traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minsker. Just one question. Were any of these, I think you mentioned one on Wenrick Street, the subject of prior traffic studies in the township?
That I don't know.
Okay.
I'm sure there was some type of study done with the two fatality accident that was on Parkway West, but that was many, many, many years ago. I think back in the late 70s.
Thank you.
The other ones, I don't, I would not have any knowledge of.
We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Minsker, excuse me. Do you know how many of these roads are state roads and how many are township?
Yes, and that is a factor too, and will be in my presentations in the future. North Mountain Road is a state road. Colonial Road is a state road. I don't know about any of the others, but those two are definitely state roads, Colonial and North Mountain.
Okay. Thank you.
Another thing. I'm sorry. At the meeting on May 7th, you said there was a place we could send our videos to show. Do you have the email address? I can forward it to you. That'd be the only thing I would need.
So I'll see you after the meeting? I'll give you the email.
Well, I have one more appointment after I leave here. But if you, I left my information there. If you could just text it to me or whatever, I left my email address and my phone number there, if you would. Thank you so much.
You, Mr. Taylor. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Joshua Vaughn. I'm a reporter with Penn Live. So on June 20th, Lower Paxton Township Police effectuated a warrant against Ashley Martin within the township based on what was a tip that was supposedly provided to the department shortly after she provided public comment at a prison board meeting, providing experience from her as a public defender, which raises its own concerns about potential retaliation and what the tip was provided for. More concerning, it has come to light that the township was aware of Ms. Martin's address, phone number, and that she had a warrant for going on a year prior to effectuating this warrant after she provided public comment. I have tried getting some answers to this, and the township has provided some answers, but still remains the question of what has changed in from July of last year to it being an issue that did not require multiple police officers showing up at her home, breaking down her door, and arresting her, where it was a matter of her just taking care of it themselves and was a low priority matter, to her speaking at a meeting, being provided a tip to the township, and then showing up the next day to her mother's house, and my understanding is threatening the mother with arrest if she did not provide an address for Ms. Martin, and threatening her with arrest if she called Ms. Martin to let her know that police were on the way to her home to effectuate the warrant. So again, I'm asking, what changed in that timeframe, to take this from a low priority matter to sending multiple police? And I'm going to ask if the township is being used in a way to have any kind of political retaliation, please come forward so that we can expose it and make sure that it doesn't happen to other people.
I do have a question, because I have no knowledge of any of this circumstance that you've mentioned. You said Ashley Martin came to a township meeting and provided public comment?
Provided public comment at a prison board meeting, a county prison board meeting. And then a tip was provided the next day to the township to effectuate a warrant against her.
That would be a police matter that I don't think this board has any knowledge of. I'm sorry. I don't know that there's any comment that either of our interim managers can make. This is the first time I'm hearing about this.
I mean, it's not something that we're going to let up on, so I'm happy to leave my card. I certainly have sent questions and tried to get answers. I have requested the body camera footage. I have been denied access to the body camera footage. Some of the statements from the police that I've received, I would say were inconsistent going across the statements. And as of last week, I requested basically these same questions, provided the information that we have, and have received no response back.
And you submitted a right-to-no request with our police bureau?
I have submitted multiple right-to-no requests, yes. And at this point, all of them have been denied.
We, all we can do is look into this. We don't have any information or knowledge of this event.
Sorry, I'll leave a couple business cards up here.
Please.
All right.
Mr. Miller?
I wasn't going to speak, William Miller, 4311, but what Mr. Minsker had to say, this Colonial Road corridor thing, one of them is speed, and one of it's the people with distracted driving, and they're flying down through there, and it is kind of hard to enforce through there. But again, I mentioned before, there was a 2005 PennDOT study, and around the township, there are numerous choke points, like out here at the Sheets and Harley Place and some others. On Colonial Road, the PennDOT recommendations were to take Earl Drive at a turning lane and put in a traffic light and improve that intersection, sightlines. They were to take Crumbs Mill, Devonshire, and take that one house or part of it, as you can see where the signal pole's been hit numerous times, even had to take the little push button and drill a hole in the other side so they didn't rip out the wires. That was to be improved. That's a major choke point, because there is no dedicated, you can't have both lanes going left or one side than the other. They were then to go down to Valley Road, and I believe it's Winfield there. You'll notice in the parking lot or in the lawn of the church that the marquee is further back up into the yard, into the grass. That was to allow to come straight out of Winfield and curve then back down in and around gradually, go back on to Valley Road. If you look at the property maps of Dolphin County, you'll see that the, like the house at Valley Road with the little curb and the old barn, the old, old house, that's the property. I mean, they've taken every piece of grass from that house, and that was an easy solution. And one of the goals was to restore that. You go back up onto Devonshire where the doctor's office is, and the guy with all the tchotchkes, the antique guy, he was a state employee. The property line is right in the road. I mean, they've absconded with some of his. So the idea was to put all this right. The last solution was, and I just didn't read this one in the study, but it was to, I guess there are problems, I've seen tractor trailers hung up on an acute angle with the red lobster. With all the different board members coming in, it's just good once in a while to revisit some of these old studies that were there. It is available. I mean, if I could learn how to, you know, put it onto a thumb drive, I'd drop it off. I do have it. It was through Swan. And there were other deals with Colonial Road at Macintosh and so on, with Triple Crown, where that hill was supposed to be gone. But due to some other constraints, back with housing and sightlines and things, back, you know, back around the corner there, you know, by St. Margaret Mary's, that never happened. But there's a lot of history to this. And so as people come in, it's nice to know, and I just thought I would, since Mr. Minsker brought it up, I would add that to the mix, so just so that you're, there's more of a level playing field, because people have been trying to do things. My biggest concern right now is at the new Elizabeth Village as to how that intersection's going to work. I just don't know how many people, how many people, is the stacking lane big enough? That could be an interesting intersection. You certainly don't want to see more lights on Colonial Road, but then again, what do you do in a situation where you're trying to control traffic? And that's for people other than me. Again, that is a state road. But again, I thought you should be aware of that. It just seems a little bit, they didn't include that in where they're going to develop the Sheasley Trust land, all that land behind Devon Manor, behind the cemetery on Colonial Road, the whole way down, including Earl Drive. That's all Sheasley land. And at some point, it will be developed, so how are you going to control that traffic? You're going to have to have an exit onto Earl Drive. But more so, I would have wished they would have aligned it somehow with the intersection at Elizabeth Village, to look at the big picture at one time and say, hey, this is a better solution. Now we got a parcel developed here, we'll have a parcel developed there. Now, how do we connect all that? It might have just been good in one intersection. But again, that ship has sailed, so we'll have to deal with it as we move ahead. But just so you realize, that will happen too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any other public comment? Please.
Hello, I'm Keith Shomper. I live at 5530 Old Locust Lane. I was here a couple weeks ago about the culvert project. And first off, I'd like to thank Supervisor John for not only coming out to our property and seeing our issues with property and the township, but helping us in resolve some of the issues in such a short amount of time. Thank you so much, John. Having an engineer on the board is such an asset. I met John last Friday at our property. We looked around at the work and township did that day. And we also spoke with PennDOT, which met me at my house for Locust Lane Park. The culvert was filled in with dirt to meet the culvert plate where it was above. Now it's like a mud hole with a bunch of stone around it. The neighbor's side looks great compared to what our side looks like. When they were there, they broke another apple tree of ours with the excavator as they put it in my yard to fix all that up. We bought our, we bought our house in 2018. It's 1850 farmhouse, and we've worked nonstop to get our yard to where it is now. It was all overgrown, abandoned, and it's nice when people walk down the street and say, it looks so beautiful, because nobody could see it prior. It was just, you couldn't see anything. It was a lot of long days and nights just to get it the way it is. And now, looking down at that culvert side, it's like an eyesore. And when John was there with me on Friday, the township excavated another two feet into my yard down that way. And I received an email from Larry stating that the right-of-way is 33 feet on Locust Lane, I mean, or on Old Locust Lane, but the road's not even 33 feet long or wide. So you're taking two more foot into my property, but nothing on the other side. And according to his email, the paving could go to the end of that stone or stop before it. I just, I don't know how far that paving's going to come back into my yard before they back it up with dirt. I just don't want to keep losing my property, along with the washout that's going into We just want, basically the same as it was prior to the culvert being upgraded to a new one. I just want it back the way it was. I graded that whole back hill off myself, so water would flow straight down in. Now it flows into a gully and then comes back into that stream that's there. I guess lastly, I don't know if there can be any no parking signs put on Old Locust Lane. There's the Raze Project there. I don't know if anybody knows about that. But they park on one side of the road there, and it's on a blind corner, so two cars can't pass each other. If you're coming down the hill, you're not seeing somebody coming up the hill. I just don't want an accident there. My wife travels there all the time, and we have maybe four neighbors there. And that's all about, I have to say. I don't know first.
So you wrote your address clearly on the sign-in sheet?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll reach out to Larry Stepansky and get an update. I know that they were working on it, and then we'll also look into the parking issue as well. Thank you. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Okay. Moving on to chair and board member comments. Any comments from the supervisors?
So I just, we've heard a lot over the last couple months about fire hydrants in the township. So I reached out, and Director Kishiba and Deputy Chief Graham were in contact with Violia. The answer to the immediate question is, Violia owns those fire hydrants. They're not property of the township. And it's their responsibility to take care of them. So I have asked Director Kishiba and Deputy Chief Graham to really work with Violia. My concern is that if we do anything to them and something goes wrong, that puts liability on the township. So I've asked them to work with Violia to secure some kind of formal hydrant maintenance initiative, because we pay a significant cost to them to be able to use those hydrants. So stay tuned. I did look into the issue, and we're going to move forward on that, because we have to have hydrants that are visible and that are usable and that are, you know, working for the township. So they're going to work with Violia to try and put some pressure on them to make sure that they're maintained and visible and working well.
Thank you. Supervisor Thompson?
Yes, good evening. I have a number of comments tonight. One, the first one that I will share, and this is just going to be the first of many times that I'm going to be bringing this up publicly. The budget process will start in September. The finance department is already doing pre-budget work. I would like the residents to put it on their calendars as we have a participatory budget process. So we need to hear from the public as we are being presented with the hopes and dreams from the various departments. Another comment that I have addresses the use... Another comment that I have addresses the use, the use in the grocery stores of digital I would like you to reach out to me regarding the use of digital coupons. If you don't have the right kind of cell phone, then you can't load the app. Thus, you don't get to take advantage of the sale price. So I know that a number of elderly people that I know have old cell phones, and so they can't load the app that you would need on your phone to take care of the digital price. So they're having to pay the more expensive price at the grocery store. That's an issue that I, I would like to address, but I need to get some more information from community residents to see if we need to write an ordinance addressing this particular issue. Also, you know that I am the treasurer, so I see the bills. I have a bill from Tucker Hall addressing the vacancy board issue. What I would like Tucker Hall to do is come to a public meeting and speak on their interpretation of SHY v Orlando. I paid, not me personally, but the township has paid $2,300 plus to get Tucker Hall to weigh in on this issue, and I would like to hear their interpretation. We've never gotten a public response on the interpretation of SHY v Orlando, and we've, residents have asked for it numerous times. So as we've been charged for work on it, I would like to hear what the work product is. Finally, I have a note here that the town, sorry, that the township has been awarded $88,586.63 from DEP, from Section 904 grant revenue. This money is related to our reported recycling tonnage and may be used for anything. My suggestion is that the money be used towards the Hodges Heights Park. That would take a big chunk out of what we need to raise. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Thompson. The last thing I just want to say is I want to thank everybody for coming out to Heroes Grove last Sunday on July 13th. It was really a great event, thanks to the entertainment provided by the Greater Harrisburg Concert Band. Getting the community together is really important, especially now, reminds us that we all have things in common, we're all in this together, and it reminds us to be good neighbors. So I really appreciate that. The last thanks I wanted to give is to our Parks Department and our Parks Board. Jim Sidler, Stan Smith, and Bruce Donnelly were there, and these volunteers always make these events happen. So thank you for being there, and thank you for helping us out. The last concert is on August 10th at Hero Grove, so please show up if you can. Be great to see you. Supervisor Najim.
Yeah, just have one thing to say. Just give kudos to Andrew and the Lower Paxton Community Gardens. You guys haven't checked it out yet. It's a great project. I don't know if you want to say something, Andrew?
So, just like that. Show something, let me see here. Can he plug in media over there? How do I hook this in here?
Yeah.
I should know how to do these things.
Yep.
Am I in okay? All right. All right, there we are. So I just want to give a quick progress update. This is back in March. My name is Andrew Siliker, 2182 Gale Drive. So this is back in March, I think this is March 20th. This is what it looked like in March, April, May, June, July. So it's coming along really nicely. We've got some very good gardeners. But we're a little bit shorthanded, so if we can get any, oh, hello.
Hi.
Here's the other partner in crime. If we can get some volunteers, we're looking to try to have maybe a movie night once the bugs die down in August, maybe a movie night against the backstop. We're going to try to have a garden fest in September and partner with the school. But we just want to try to make the garden as nice as possible. And in the meantime, we're trying to partner with some local food pantries, because we want to, there's some food, as we talked about a month ago, there's some food insecurity in the area, and we want to try to alleviate that a little bit. So any hands we can get, right now, it's mostly the two of us. We've got 10 plots set aside for food donation. So if, if we can somehow tap into the Parks volunteer network, or anybody watching at home, wherever the camera is, if you want to come, just go on the Lower Paxton Community Garden webpage, send an email, and we'll hook you up and give you some plants if you want, and some produce. And actually, we didn't come empty-handed today either. Does anybody want?
I put my basket over there. There's things in there.
There's only one fork.
Oh, no. Thank you. I'm good.
We got some birds, we got some, we're not vegetable eaters, you guys. But we got a little bit of different ones, but any volunteers we can get, we highly appreciate. Anybody else want to sit there yet, please?
Thank you very much.
So, one of the things that I would like to share with you right now is that, raise your hand, please, from the food bank, my neighbor. Thank you. Do you see the woman with her hand up, Andrew? So she, I gave most of my zucchini and cucumbers to Ms. Julie today, because I was out of town at a conference, and I understand while I was away, the rain and the weather was very good. So I, I came back to about 20 zucchini and, and 15 cucumbers. So I shared with her so she could take it to the food bank. So that would be your connection to a food bank.
Yeah. Thank you.
But yeah, please, any volunteers? We want to have some events, we want to make this park integrated. We don't, we don't want to just have gardens there. We want to go a little bigger. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You covered it.
Yeah.
Thank you Supervisor Najim for bringing that up. We appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I have one more comment.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I was happy to see when I came back this July 11th memo to the manager of Raising Cane. Have we shared that publicly?
It was in our packet today, and we're going to take action on that next.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And on that, we're moving forward on to old business. The first action item 7.1 is an action to ratify a formal letter of appreciation to Raising Cane's restaurant. Director Scott, is there anything that you'd like to add on this?
Good evening. No, the Greenway Committee met and made a motion last month to show their appreciation. Bill Miller headed this. If you wanted to come up and speak on behalf of the Greenway Committee, because you are the one who raised this motion.
Mr. Miller.
Bill Miller. Caught me a little off guard there. No, the Raising Cane did a phenomenal job. I came to one of the commission meetings. It was on the agenda. I asked a couple of questions, and their architect was just absolutely so open to working. And when you look at it, it's exemplary. It, it's the type of construction that to me is a standard, as, well, it can't be done. Yes, it can be done, and they've showed it can be done. And additionally, when you look at, if you haven't seen it, you drive over there across from Home Depot, and just look at how it was constructed. Aesthetically pleasing, highly functional, very ambulatory, and now gives people a lot, I, I know a lot of the people at Home Depot, and they're a lot, and they crawl, now they're going over, they have a safe way to cross. Would be nice, hint, hint, to maybe get some new lines on, on the road. 22 is a state road, but you know, the guidelines do help going across. The other thing that you will notice is when they cut into the front of that parking lot and in front of the I place, they took, they took the embankment back, and everybody said, we can't get sidewalks along Route 22. They have demonstrated how it can be done. I have mentioned, everything can be an engineered solution. People have so much combined knowledge, just get together, and, and you're going, you're going to find a way. So again, in the committee, the Greenway Committee supported everything on this, and there's another one going to be coming up too, for another thank you to another outstanding project that some people have seen along Colonial Road, if you look at those walkways. But that'll be an official notice as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. You can see that they went above and beyond. They're definitely good community citizens, that they considered that foot traffic access, so we do appreciate that. May I have a motion to ratify a formal letter of appreciation to Raising Cane's?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion or public comment? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to action item 7.2, to approve an interim management services agreement for Tom Verno. May I have a motion to approve the interim management services agreement?
I make a motion to approve the interim management services agreement for Mr. Verno.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or public comment on this matter? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? The motion carries. Action item 7.3, an action to approve an interim assistant management services agreement with Director Adam Kishiba. May I have a motion to approve the assistant management services agreement?
I have motion to approve the interim assistant management services agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any public comment or discussion on this matter? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Before we move on, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Verno and Mr. Kishiba. The last two weeks have been distinct change in the way that this township has operated, and we do appreciate all of your time and effort so far, and we look forward to you helping us move us forward. We appreciate your time and your efforts. Okay. Action 7.4, to approve the substantial amendment to the 2024 annual action plan. Director Scott.
Good evening. This evening, I will be presenting all four related action items 7.4 through 7.7 at one time for your consideration regarding the township's participation in the federal community development block grant program. Please note, due to various transitions in the township, I was recently assigned to this role, and am actively working to learn the CDBG program. First, under Agenda Item 7.4, we are requesting your approval of a substantial amendment to the 2024 annual action plan. This amendment proposes the cancellation of the previously approved Locust Lane travel signal improvements project and the reallocation of $198,790 in funds towards parks and recreation improvements at Coons and/or Hodges Heights Park. This reallocation better supports the township's timeliness under the CDBG program. Moving to Agenda 7.5, we are also seeking your action to adopt the 2025 annual action plan. The township will receive $261,844 for the program year 2025, which spans July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. The proposed use of funds includes $209,476 for park and recreation improvements focused on accessibility of Coons and Hodges Heights Park, and $52,368 allocated for planning and administrative activities, which may include staff and consultant fees. These priorities are reflected in the draft action plan that was held and presented at a public meeting on July 10th, 2025. As part of completing the submission to HUD, Agenda Item 7.6 requests the authorization for the board chair to execute the required application documents and certifications, including HUD forms SF424 and SF424B and the required assurances. This action ensures the application is properly certified for federal review. And then finally, under Agenda, Agenda Item 7.7, we respectfully request the board's authorization to submit the complete 2025 CDBG application and the substantial amendment to the 2024 plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And that, all related items have been up, and two public meetings were held, and that is the final request, so.
Thank you. Director Scott, can you confirm that we didn't receive any public comment?
Correct.
On the, great, thank you. And so with the reallocation from 2024 of approximately $198,000, we now have approximately $400,000 for Coons and Hodges Heights collectively for 24 and 5.
Correct.
Okay. Will the funding help us make the timeline for any of the improvements for the parks faster? Or will it just?
Yes.
Continue to enhance?
Specifically for Hodges Heights, we are waiting on a grant. We applied for the CFA grant. Their last announcement, award announcement tends to come late November, so hopefully by the end of the year, we could find out if we receive that grant, that's $250,000 that we would receive. The amount that we could allocate with the CDBG is about $315,000. So we would be able to complete the Hodges Heights Park project in 2026. So there is hope for that. But in order to start moving forward with the spending of the, these funds, we have to move immediately, and so Coons may start happening quicker. And the quote we received for the sidewalks was $295,000. So we would be able to move forward with that as well, once we receive the 2025 action plan award.
Okay. One other question. The Locust Lane Traffic Signal Improvements Project, is that just being abandoned, or will that be funded a different way, or do we not know yet?
I would have to look into that. I'm not familiar.
Okay.
I know there's a PennDOT project coming next year.
Okay.
I don't know if that's what you're referring to.
Thank you. Any other supervisor questions?
Wouldn't Locust Lane be funded by PennDOT?
Yeah, there is a project currently on the, let's schedule to be early next year, so.
Okay.
Okay. Yep, that's why I was wondering why there was $198,000 allocated toward that project previously. We will look into that. Okay. May I have a motion to approve action items 7.4 through 7.7?
Sorry, Madam Chair.
Can we?
We can't approve them all.
We have to do them all separately.
I'm sorry.
Director Scott, I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay, well then we'll start with 7.4. I thought we could combine all of them like I see at other meetings. Okay. Action to approve the substantial amendment to the 2024 annual action plan. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Is there any public comment or discussion on 7.4? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item 7.5, to adopt the 2025 annual action plan. May I have a motion to approve the plan?
I make a motion to approve, to approve the 2025 action plan.
Thank you Supervisor Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7.6, an action to authorize the chair to execute the required application and certifications for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, action item 7.7, to authorize the submission of an application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, can I have one comment?
Yes.
That I have for?
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have asked for public comment. I apologize. Director Kishiba, please.
I'm sorry. I just want to recognize Rachel Scott and Amanda Zerby for the work that they put into this. They were kind of cast into this at the last minute. They've done a stellar job in getting up to speed very quickly and meeting with the required folks, and I think they did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Scott, Director Zerby. Was there any other public comment or discussion on that last action item 7.7? Thank you. And for the recording secretary's sake, we'll put Supervisor Thompson down as the second on that one. Thank you. Okay. Finally, Director Scott, we'll move on to item 7.8, an action to award a contract for Centennial Acres and Cole Park Court renovations.
All right. This evening, I'm requesting the board action to award a contract for the renovation of the existing basketball court at Centennial Acres. renovation of the existing basketball court at Centennial Acres, as well as the tennis, handball, and basketball courts at Cole Park. This park project was included in the approved 2025 Capital Improvement Plan and was budgeted for the 2025 fiscal year. The project was publicly advertised and bid twice, as the initial round resulted in one response. In the second round, we received three competitive bids. The lowest responsible bidder was SLC Excavating LLC, with a total bid of $573,457, reflecting a savings of approximately $37,000 from the original bid that was given. The township's engineering consultant YSM Landscape Architects has reviewed the bid and provided a formal letter of recommendation. References for SLC Excavating have been thoroughly checked and verified. The contractor is deemed qualified to perform the scope of work. Pending the board's approval this evening, a notice to proceed would be issued with construction scheduled to begin July 23rd and completion anticipated by October 31st. This time, I'm requesting a motion to award the contract to SLC Excavating in the amount of $573,457.
Thank you Director Scott. So, these improvements are specifically for tennis, handball, and basketball court improvements. I see some trail improvements, maybe some other landscaping. Anything else?
Yes, there's making them ADA accessible, the courts.
Great. Are there any other supervisor questions for Director Scott?
Just what was the engineer's estimate on this?
Oh, goodness.
Was it?
It did meet the...I'm sorry.
Was it within the budget?
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Wonderful.
Okay, I make the motion.
Alright. Supervisor Najim has made a motion to award a contract for Centennial Acres and Cole Park Court renovations. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any public comment or discussion on this matter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you Director Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. The first action item 8.1 is an action to adopt Resolution 2025-07, amending and restating Resolution 2330, the right-to-know policy for municipal public records. And, I don't know if Mr. Vernau or Mr. Kishiba want to provide any narrative on this. I think this keeps our procedure the same. It doesn't change anything. It just replaces the right-to-know officer from our prior township manager to Director Kishiba.
That's correct.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-07?
Just one question. Did we, in executive session, there was a correction that needed to be made? Was that?
Shelley, we will provide you with a very minor typo on page 2 of the resolution.
Okay.
So, to approve the adoption of the resolution as amended with that correction to identify Adam Kishiba as the right-to-know officer. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you Supervisor Najim. Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any public comment or discussion on this action item? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Weaver, we are on to you. You've been waiting very patiently.
Yes.
Action item 8.2, on the Carroll Engineering GIS Support Services Proposal.
Yeah, thank you. Board members, you have in your packet a proposal from Carroll Engineering for GIS Support Services. As most of the board is aware, we have an extensive MS4 Stormwater Management Program, and a consent order that requires significant GIS support. Over the last seven years, we've had significant growth in the township, and the storm and sewer assets need to be upgraded. As noted in the proposal, Carroll Engineering is a unique position, because Ben Beatty was a prior intern for the township, and he built a good portion of the GIS system. The board may be aware that, as part of the stormwater fee, Mr. Judd was a big proponent of showing the public how we spent our stormwater fee money. So, Ben was really instrumental in doing these storybooks that we posted on our webpage, showing slides of these programs. So, in the last four or five years, we've had some GIS changes. We used to have our own GIS technician in the Sewer Authority, and that person was transferred over to the township. And, I did meet with Brad before he left, and he did support the authority getting our own person back. However, it is cheaper to use engineers to do GIS work, rather than bring someone in-house. So, this is a short-term catch-up plan, using Ben with his efficiency with our current GIS technician...GIS manager, excuse me, Robert Hayes. The intent is to have him perform this work in 2025 only. We have $24,000 in the budget. We had allocated 25, we've only spent 1,000. So, down the road, the authority will be presenting a budget in '26 with a more extensive GIS proposal. Down the road, we do anticipate using GHD to do the sewer work, and HRG to do the stormwater work. And then, I'll meet with Adam and Tom and the new management as that progresses on what the township wants to do for GIS support. But, at this time, we recommend that the board approve the proposal from Carroll Engineering for GIS support. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, do we believe that the services provided by Carroll Engineering will fit within the remainder of the budget for 2025? At least the priority list that you have identified?
So, I have two lists there. So, the priority list will definitely fit the additional tasks.
Okay.
Until we complete the first list, we're leaving that, in case there's money left over. But, the guys are pretty efficient, so we hope to get through it all. I can plug in and show you, if no one's ever seen the GIS, it's very powerful. It's come a long way in the last five to 10 years with staff and our engineers, but I could do that...I know it's a busy night. We could do it another time. I'd recommend a workshop meeting and have our engineers present and do a full-blown GIS presentation for the board, because it is a valuable asset for staff, and the public as well. We're trying to get that public-facing right now. The only thing on the website is the Sewer and Storm app.
That's right.
But, to answer your question, we believe that the first task list can be done.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, with the $24,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
No, I just think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah, good.
I agree. Thank you. So, do we have a motion on action item 8.2, to approve the Carroll Engineering GIS Support Services Proposal?
Still moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any public comment or discussion on this action item? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number nine, subdivision and land development. Item 9.1, action to approve a preliminary final subdivision plan for 6545 Parkway East.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. I'm John Murphy with Alpha Consulting Engineers. With me is my colleague Ben Gregory and the applicant, Mr. Grove. The plan before you tonight at 6545 Parkway is actually revision to a previously approved plan. Specific buyers have come into Mr. Grove's arena, and we are tweaking some lot lines in a minor fashion. We're reducing Lot 1 from 4 to 2.75 acres. Lot 2, we're increasing from 3 to 3.9 acres. And, the residual lot in the rear, we're increasing by a half acre from 11.35 to 11.8 acres. We're requesting the same waivers that were previously approved by this board. We're actually asking for one deferral. We're asking for a deferral in stormwater management, as no construction is proposed with this subdivision plan. As the houses are submitted for building permit review, we'll provide the necessary stormwater plans for review by the township. And, we're also asking for the same waivers that we obtained before, namely, public improvements in terms of cartway width, sidewalk, and also additional curbing there. Once again, staff and engineer have recommended approval of these same waivers that were previously granted. One correction on there, it was our bad. We are asking to remove the waiver that we previously asked for, for street trees, because we have installed the street trees. So, we're asking for one deferral, three waivers as before, and we ask if the board would kindly approve this plan subject to staff and engineering memorandums. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the waivers and also the plan, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you very much. Director Zerby, anything else to add?
He pretty much read my memo, so I will say that the deferral is customary for that type of subdivision to bring that stormwater management plan in when the building permit comes in.
Okay.
So, we can validate also that the street trees have been planted and inspected on the lot, so that did remove that waiver.
Wonderful. Thank you. And, HRG follows the same recommendations here.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the supervisors?
No.
No? May I have a motion to approve the preliminary final subdivision plan for 6545 Parkway East, which is revised plan number 2512?
I motion to approve the preliminary final subdivision plan for 6545 Parkway East.
Thank you Supervisor Najim. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public discussion or comment on this issue? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Item number 9.2, improvement guarantees. Supervisor Thompson?
Having reviewed the memo from Ms. Zerby on the four improvement guarantees, the estates of Forest Hills, the estates of Autumn Oaks, two properties on Colonial and Ling...the first property on Colonial and Lingelstown Road, the empty lot sitting in front of the Greystone Restaurant, and 6471 Hunter's Run Road, I make a motion to approve the improvement guarantees as they stand.
Thank you Supervisor Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment or discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 10, payment of bills Lower Paxton Township and for the Lower Paxton Township Authority. Supervisor Thompson?
Having reviewed...having reviewed the three check registers with the finance manager, I make a motion to pay the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment or discussion on this matter? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any announcements from the board? The only thing that I'll add is, our next board meeting is not Tuesday, August 5th. That is Night Out, which I hope everybody can get to. It's a great event. Our next board meeting, which is a business meeting, will be Monday, August 4th at 7:00 p.m. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thanks again for coming out tonight.
Yep.
Have a good one.